Members of the public are invited to attend in-person city council meetings and council chambers on the lower level of City Hall. Public access to tonight's meeting is also available on the Local Government Access Channel Eight for Comcast subscribers, on the city's YouTube channel online, and by telephone using the call-in numbers posted on the meeting agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lukman-Heromasa?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Harameo?
Here.
Councilmember Condo?
Here.
Councilmember Roper?
Here.
Councilmember Goff?
Here.
Councilmember Nowicki?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know, let's just do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know, I say the pledge in all my meetings, so why not add another one? All right, we have two items on the agenda for tonight. The first one is the North Glenn Marketplace update with Houtensky Capital Partners. So our Director of Economic Development, Alyssa Moding, is here to introduce this item. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much. Tonight, we just have the update regarding leasing activity and capital improvements at North Glenn Marketplace. It's my pleasure to introduce Brad Houtensky. He's the CEO of HCP, and he's here to share just a few slides and talk a little bit about some of the activity that they're seeing at North Glenn Marketplace. So I will step aside and introduce Brad, whom you've seen many times. So, thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Alyssa. So I was here in July of '24, and I'm really, I'm going to repeat some of the slides I did last time and kind of go through them quickly, so mostly so we have time for you to ask me questions and have more discussion rather than me giving a presentation, because I think you probably know all about it. Just, you know, our company, I've been in the business for 40 years. All I do is shopping centers. We've done centers all around the country, 30 million square feet in 29 states. So this is our business, is what we do, shopping centers. So I was the chairman of ICSC in 2012, 2013. So this is what we do. Everyone in my company is a shopping center person. As I said before, this has been a tremendous partnership for our company with your city, with NURA, with the council. It's been terrific. You've been a very good partner over the last seven years. And, I mean, I've worked in hundreds of cities, and this is either the number one or near the top as far as the relationship and the contribution, you know, opinions, whatever, but the partnership has been terrific. So that's great. As I said, this is a public meeting, so that there's certain questions I won't be able to answer, like who my prospective tenants are and what my rents are, because other people in competing centers would get that information, and that would be my disadvantage. But I'll try to answer any question that you do ask. We know how important this property is to your city, and, but there's other people on my side, investors, lenders, and the tenants, those are all other constituencies that have an addition to the city. This is just the history. I think you know all this. We bought it for about $50 million in 2017. It's 40% vacant. There's an OEA here that's very restrictive, and there are a lot of deferred maintenance when we bought it, a hostile owner in the Mervins Building. So in terms of leasing, it's really hard. I mean, leasing is what we do. This is what my company does. But we have relationships. We have a local broker who is here in town, but tenants pick their locations based on demographics, and I'll talk about that. I'll talk about Trader Joe's. I know that's something you like to talk about. It's really expensive. We spent $17 million already here just on leasing costs, not including other things that we've done, such as signage, whatever, time-consuming. PROST took us three years to do, so it takes a long time to do these things. And there's a lot of complications that we've talked, I think I talked about last time, so I'll skip over that. So I want to talk about Trader Joe's, because that was something you asked me about last time I was here. And we, you know, there were someone, we'd love to have them in the property, and the Bed Bath space would be perfect for them. Last time, you said, "Well, why don't we have Trader Joe's?" And I said, "Well, we talked to them, and they didn't want to go here." I said, "Okay, but we basically, after we pitched them, we paid for a consultant study, a supermarket study that projected what sales this consultant thought they would do in this location." And we gave that to Trader Joe's and said, "You're wrong. This says you actually would do pretty well here." And they're like, "Okay, but we have other locations right now that we want." So we would love to put them there. You know, they've said no twice, once by their evidence and two by the evidence we gave them. And, you know, really, we have to decide, is in that location, do we wait forever till they decide finally, maybe one day, or maybe not, that they'd like to go here? Or do we put somebody else in there? We don't want to leave the space vacant forever either. So that's kind of the dynamic we have. But, you know, we don't, we never give up, and we still talk to Trader Joe's, and maybe someday it'll happen. But as I was saying at an earlier meeting today, if we said to them, "The rent's free here," they still wouldn't come here necessarily if it wasn't the right tenant, because the cost of what's in the store and also their labor are more important than the rent. Obviously, we couldn't make money on zero rent. I don't know if you're familiar with the industry, but, yeah. But even with zero rent, they probably wouldn't come here if they didn't think it was the right location for them. So we're not giving up, and maybe we'll get another supermarket there, and we've done the study to do that, but that's kind of why you don't have Trader Joe's. I think you said last time, "I'd get a sweatshirt, a North Glenn sweatshirt if I get Trader Joe's." So I'm going to hold you to it if I get it. But so far, I have no sweatshirt, and you have no Trader Joe's. Oh, this, I thought this is interesting. This is a slide, the green is all the new leases we did, and the yellow is all the renewals we did, so extensions. And you can see basically every single space in the center is either green or yellow, and whoever did this, some of them were green and yellow. So we've touched basically every single space in the center in the last seven years. We've either done a new lease or have extended the lease of an existing tenant. Meanwhile, some things have happened in the industry that aren't North Glenn issues or aren't North Glenn Marketplace issues. They are issues of our industry. So there were eight bankruptcies. I listed them, Bed Bath you know about, but there were seven other, all of whom, and most recently, Joanne, who their business failed nationally, and they closed all their locations, or most of their locations, including this one. So it wasn't a commentary on this location, it was a commentary on their business. And in many cases, either they're selling things that people don't want, or in many cases, private equity companies that put a lot of debt on their balance sheet, and the business has failed. So that's not a North Glenn Marketplace issue, that's a national issue. Four other tenants, as I mentioned, who left because their business here didn't, wasn't successful, US Bank, Atlantic Bread, et cetera. During COVID, we had 12 tenants that we gave relief to, it was $400,000 that we gave in rent relief to tenants to try to get them through that period. You know, Harkins, we originally were talking AMC, and then we did a lease with Harkins, and they were all set. And then during COVID, most states closed all theaters. Theaters were not to operate, and Harkins' business suffered, and they decided they couldn't make the investment here. We decided that maybe we didn't want a theater we could do better. We ultimately got PROST, but that took four years, you know, as far as delaying the north end. Now PROST is open, I think it's great, hopefully you do too. But since we last met, I just wanted to do this slide, which shows what we've done. So four new leases, Bubba's 33, Big Blue Swim School, ABC Academy, and Pilates Studio. Five leases we extended, these are existing tenants, Maurice's, Woodley's, Texas Roadhouse, Mountain Man, and Sincetti's. Put $1.9 million into the signage, the, hopefully you've liked that signage, I think it looks great, I was there today, but more cohesive signage, and I think more inviting, and certainly along 25, it looks a lot better in terms of the signage that's there. So that was a big change. We continue to be a good partner for the community. I think this is just all these things in the last year that we've done. My favorite was the SWAT team coming and using the US Bank building to practice on. I kind of wanted to participate in that, but I wasn't able to, because I thought, you know, that would be kind of interesting. But, you know, seriously, we try to be a good citizen, we try to give money, we try to get our tenants to give money, and try to use our parking lot for things. So this, just to tie it all up, I guess, I think we're on the same page. We want the same thing out of the center that you do, leased existing tenants. And one thing I'll tell you, we have had tenants who've wanted to be in the center, and we chose not to do a lease with them, because we didn't think in the long term they were the kind of people that we wanted, the kind of people that you wanted. I mean, they would have paid rent, and I guess in the short term, I would, you know, I would have benefited if they were paying rent to me instead of having the space vacant, but they didn't feel like the right tenant, they weren't the right uses that I thought, you know, the citizens of North Glenn would want long-term. We know walkability is an issue, and so we're working on that. Safety, you know, we've invested $30,000 a year in the Flock cameras. Your police department has been excellent as far as coordinating with us, is helping with us. It only works if the police department will support our efforts. But, you know, that's a major expense that we didn't anticipate originally, but, you know, we think it's worked. There's been some examples of people getting caught, because every time someone comes in, their license plates are connected. If there's a stolen car, it goes right to the police department, and they can come over and take care of it. So we think safety is really important, obviously. The 104th Plan, which Brooke was working on, you know, we're a participant in that, we're a part of that, and that's important. But, look, there's opportunities and there are challenges. We haven't taken advantage of all the opportunities, and there's been a lot of challenges, but I think we all have one goal, which is to make the marketplace the best that it can be. And that's what we're trying to do. And with that, I'll just open up to questions. You can, you know, ask me whatever you want, and I will try to answer them.
All right, I'm going to start with Councilmember Condo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Houtensky, for the presentation. Two questions. Most recently, the Safeway grocery store at 120th and Washington had closed. So I'm just curious, the market research study that you did, is there a possibility of being able to refresh that or update that in view of the fact that a major grocery store chain has closed?
Yeah, I introduced Alyssa to the people who did that study for us, and I think she's even talked to them, and, you know, is deciding whether that would be something you should do for that location as well. It, you know, it's far enough away that it's different, but the same mechanism, which is looking at the number of people in the area, looking at the competitive grocery set, and deciding whether a grocer could be successful or not. So I've given the same consultant we use, and maybe you can get the Houtensky discount, I don't know, I'll try to get it.
Gotcha. Well, my thought is, if there is one less grocer within your catchment area, perhaps that changes the dynamics a little bit for potentially a grocer going into the marketplace.
I mean, it helps. I mean, I don't, I'm guessing that's a few miles away, three miles away maybe, or four, but, so, that's kind of, you know, a long distance. There's other, there's a lot of grocery stores between that and our center, but, yeah, it has to help. I mean, it's, you're 100% right. It's the number of grocery sales in that market, and then the number of competitors are taking it. So one less competitor definitely provides more. But does it go to, you know, say Target and Sprouts that are right across the street, or does it come down? I, you know, that's not my expertise, I can't tell you.
Gotcha. And then my follow-up, thank you for talking about the Flock camera system, and I'm assuming that $30,000 per year is to pay for the monitoring services and all that?
Yes.
Now that the cameras are in place? And I'm curious, are you collecting data, or for that matter, maybe other properties are also collecting data? Have you seen an appreciable decrease in retail theft or spoilage in your properties where you've installed Flock systems?
First of all, retail crime, organized retail crime, it's called, is a very prevalent issue in the industry. It's talked about all the time. Basically, some people decide that they can go into a store and just take things that don't belong to them and walk out with them, and many retailers are reticent to have their employees get involved in that kind of situation because of liability issues, totally understandable. The Flock cameras, I think, I think they do make an impact, but I still think that, unfortunately, retailers are a good target. There is a lot of stealing that goes on, and I think, I mean, the industry hasn't been able to say what the answer is, quite honestly. I don't, you know, I don't, it's unfortunate, and it certainly bothers me personally that people would take advantage of that kind of thing, but it's, I would say the Flock cameras help, and we've caught people before they've stolen, and that, we have examples of that, but I can't honestly say that it guarantees, you know, less stealing.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember Nowicki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Houtensky, for being here tonight.
You guys can call me Brad if you don't mind, I bet it's up to you.
Brad, all right, Brad, you got it. Okay, so 40 years in the industry, that's a lot of wisdom there. So can you kind of briefly tick me through kind of the history of kind of shopping centers?
Sure. I'll do my best.
Sure.
So, you know, when it started in the 50s, in the 60s, basically with people going from the cities to the suburbs, the civilization, a lot of basically farmland, green land was used to build shopping centers, a very profitable business. A lot of those were enclosed malls, and the way an enclosed mall works is that generally there are four or five department store anchors. The owner will give the mall anchor the land and give them money to build a building, and make all their money with the stores in between the anchors. At the same time, you know, grocers went to where the people are, people have to eat, other retailers went there. What happened probably in the 80s or so, 90s, people went from kind of the discount department stores to what's called power boxes, and those boxes would focus on just one part of the industry. So like PetSmart or Pet Go would do food, would do pets, Office Depot, Office Max, Staples would do Off Supply, et cetera. So a lot of specialization, and people felt like, "Well, I'd go to a large off-supply place, and there'll be everything I need, so that'll be better than maybe just going to the drugstore where they have some pens and pads." So that was seen as something. So what happened over time is that, you know, shopping centers expanded to the point where there, today there's about 114,000 shopping centers in the United States. And where we are today is that most places that are good shopping center locations already have a shopping center. So what has happened is that there's been almost no new development lately, mainly because, not because the industry, not because of the industry, but because of the cost. It could be $300 a foot to build a new shopping center, including the land. If you want a 10% return, that's $30 a foot rents, and that's a really high rent. Retailers pay based on sales, like I was saying with Trader Joe's, not based on market rents or anything like that. So they can't make money at $30, so therefore you can't build a shopping center. So now what's happened, that there's been a lot of retailers who have failed, like I said before, either because they have too much debt, or because they're not selling something that people want, or competition or what have you. But because there's no new supply and lots of demand, and, but when I say demand, it's retailers, but it's also medical uses, it's also entertainment, it's also restaurants, and service uses. So lots of demand to be in the shopping center, and it's a great place for lots of businesses, but the supply is limited because you can't afford to build new. So what happens is, when we have space, that, you know, there's more people are interested, but it still doesn't mean that everyone is interested you want in your center. And so that's what's happened. So when you read now about retailer failure, you know, I was saying before, there's a center we have in Chicago, for instance, where Joanne left, and we put in Nordstrom Rack. And you don't have to know a lot about shopping centers to know that if you replace Joanne, who was kind of in trouble, with Nordstrom Rack on a long-term lease at higher rent, that that's kind of a good thing, right? So there is, there is, there are good things happening, but that's basically, there's limited supply, lots of demand, and that's kind of where we are today.
Okay. So as far as, would you say that's kind of the trend today? Limited supply, increased demand? What would you say?
I don't think it's, like, I mean, that's a gross generalization, it's not that every single, I mean, there are still some centers are better than other centers, right? And there's, and so it's not necessarily every center has a lot, some centers don't have the man. If you have a, I mean, the center you mentioned on 120th where Safeway left, now suddenly that center, there's not a lot of demand to be in that center, because you've lost your anchor, right? And so they were bringing a certain amount of people to the property, and now they're not anymore, because they're closed. So now some of the other tenants there might not, you know, might not prosper, they might not choose to stay there.
So of kind of successful shopping centers, what would you say they kind of do well?
What do they do well?
Yeah.
I think they're, they have quality tenants, quality anchors, that's very important.
Can you give me an example of a quality?
Well, like in North Glenn, Ross is extremely successful.
Okay.
Very successful. Didi's is successful. PetSmart is successful. Five Below is successful. So, you know, there are tenants who are, who do well. Ultimately, their ability to pay rent is based on having enough sales, and so those tenants do very well there. They match the market. They're, this is a good location for them, they're happy, they're successful there, it's their customer, kind of thing. So, so that's important. But you need parking, which North Glenn obviously has arguably too much parking, but the visibility, good location, good demographics, you know, all those things are, make shopping centers successful.
Okay. Along those lines, the demographics piece, you mentioned, or it looks like Trader Joe's kind of did their little study. What did they say about the demographics?
They said they're, they're...
It looks like it was not right customer demographics.
They want higher income. They're typically a higher-income customer, that's who they say they...
Okay.
...target, that's who pays their prices, and that's who they target.
Gotcha. Okay. What are kind of the competitors? And, I mean, I have my own kind of theories here. So, and I don't mean like what are competitors to the stores, right? Because I, you know, but like, shopping centers in general, like what are kind of the main competitors?
I'm sorry, with shopping centers or different operators? I'm not sure I understand your question.
And I'm thinking kind of like Amazon.
Oh.
Right? Because month after month, we see, you know, that marketplace kind of sale, sales are where they're at, but yet online sales continue to increase. So that tells me people are shopping online, you know, they don't...
There's no question. I mean, I think I may have asked this last time I was here, but it's roughly about 16% of US sales are online, and the rest are in stores, which is usually, that number is lower than most people expect, but that's US census, okay? What's happened, one of the trends I forgot to mention, is that retailers have embraced online. So yes, Amazon is probably the number one site, but in the top five are also Target.com, Macy's.com, Walmart.com. So these are typically bricks and mortar retailers who also have online presences. And they find through what they call omnichannel, is that they can combine, they can get the most sales by being online and in the store. And so, for instance, the, when you buy something online, you get it to your house, and you don't like it, you often go to the store and return it, and people buy other things when they get to the store. So that's seen as the most efficient way for retail to be successful, is by omnichannel, by having both places. And there really aren't any online retailers that I can think of who don't have a store presence. Amazon obviously bought Whole Foods, they do their own stores as well, because they decided that in order to be, and they're the best retailer there is, right? But in order to be competitive, they had to also do, have store presence too. Warby Parker opened stores, Bonobo opened store, you know, every successful online retailer has also had stores, and most bricks and mortar retailers also do online, but not all.
Okay. And lastly, it looks, it seems to me, and again, I'm a noob to all this stuff, so...
Doing pretty well.
I know a little bit based off kind of my role here, and just what I've seen around, how important is kind of that mixed use, kind of having housing on, you know, sites like, kind of around the retail area, as like a trend or something going forward?
Yeah, there's, there's no question that more and more housing is being interspersed with retail. That's definitely a national trend. You know, and having it at the property is good, because you have a built-in base, but, you know, you'd have to have quite a lot of people to be able to support the whole center with just the people on site, so it augments it. Like, they're building the senior living thing across the street from us, I think that'll help our center. I think people will walk over. In fact, they're already talking about making sure there's a crosswalk or whatever that they get across to our center, but that will, that will help. But, you know, as you know, the center's like a quarter mile long from one end to the other. So, I mean, I don't know how far people walk. I hope those people are young enough that they'll be able to walk from one end of the center to the other, you know, and be able to shop and all. But it's really about the combination of onsite and also in the area. And I think in, with our center, there is that, and you're also right on the highway too, so that means people want to go to a certain store, they can be even further than the normal ring. We usually think about a three-mile ring, roughly, and, but I think this center can draw from further away if there's a store there that doesn't have another location, and people have to go to PetSmart, then this is the only PetSmart they're going to drive for.
Right. Okay. I think that's all my questions. Thank you very much, sir.
Councilmember Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I noticed on your slides, you said Bubba 33's signed a lease, and the swim school, where approximately are those going to be going in and out?
Where in the center? Let's see. Does this have a, one of those pointers, do you know?
It doesn't work.
Oh, it doesn't work? Okay. So where it says Melody Drive on the bottom, the swim school is just above that. Where the M and L, it was, it was, it's like Vanuah, this is crazy.
So like the old dress barn?
Yeah, well, near there.
Okay.
Bubba's 33 is where the Soul Barbeque is.
Okay, great. And then is the ABC school, is that a daycare or tutoring?
It's a daycare.
Okay. And where is that? Where's that going to be?
Oh, sorry, that's on the end. If you look where Sincetti's is, is that green that's right at the end of, on the other side of PROST.
Okay.
Don't ask her to point to Sincetti's, I don't think she can read.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Heromeo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Brad, for the presentation, all the information. My name's Jay, we could be on a first-name basis, so. So I've been transitioning now into a career into real estate too, and I was wondering, so we, we mentioned multifamily before. I see that parcel one, there's a, it's a huge untapped area where it's just basically vacant, it's parking. I noticed that sometimes the ones that do, like, that bring the snow and stuff, like, they park their vehicles there, but I haven't seen it utilized like up to, you know, its best use. I was wondering if you had any thoughts or desires to develop parcel one, and that's on the northwest side of the...
Yeah, right, correct. I mean, that, you're absolutely right, that is a great, that is an underused portion of the center. We are not allowed to do residential there zoning-wise. I mean, we'd have to come to the powers that be and get approval for that, and there's a process for doing that. But, I mean, I think that would be a great residential site. Now that the senior living is across the street, I think, you know, that has a lot of potential, but that's not entirely my choice, it'd have to be approved, I guess, by...
Awesome, and I have another question. What do you believe are some examples of other commercial businesses or entertainment attractions that we can have on parcel four that will complement PROST, since we have those locations in red just along Kennedy Drive?
Yeah. We thought, you know, I think restaurants would be good. I mean, the, like, the Bath &amp; Body actually has gotten a lot of improved traffic from just being near PROST when... from just being near Prost, when I guess people are waiting for their table, what have you, and, and, and that's been helpful. So, that, that definitely has been, um, you know, probably under, underperforming, I would say. Um, I think that we have a couple restaurants we're talking to now. We have, uh, another buffet, um, and s- and some other things we're doing there. But, um, the problem is, is it's not enough space where you could have, it limits what kind of entertainment you could do, because the spaces are relatively small. Now that the, um, Joanne space, because, because they've, we, we have control of it again, and they filed bankruptcy, um, you know, that's an opportunity probably to make more of a statement on that end. So, we're kind of looking and see, um, I was talking to someone today, who, who might possibly be a good use for that. So, um, but, I, I think that, uh, I think that's definitely one of the areas leasing-wise, it's one of the biggest opportunities.
Most definitely. I had another question, and it just-
Sure.
Just lost it, but, uh, I'll circle back if that's okay, in a second, if I get it.
Yeah.
But thank you for the information.
Thank you.
And your partnership as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Brad, for being here. Um, I really appreciate everything you're doing. Um, as someone who has five different leases in five different cities, I know that, um, some landlords are not as great to work with as some of the things that you've done. So, for example, providing covert relief, I just want to say thank you, because I had one out of the five who did that. Um, so, that means that you care about your tenants. Um, now, along those lines, I know when I joined city council, this is my ward, uh, one of the things that our seniors said was the walkability piece, which you're working on. Um, you said, what kind of ideas do you have for that, that can improve things even in the short term? Um, because I think that is something, right? As we look at, hoping that this is more of a main street, where people can go and visit certain locations, not just Prost, but stay for a while to encourage them and shop. Um, just, you, I know you may not be able to say everything, but just some ideas potentially around that?
Um, yeah. So, I mean, I guess as a practical matter, this is a really big center. Like I said, it's a quarter-mile, I think, from, from 104th down to Prost. And, uh, people tend to, you know, get in their car, go to a store, and then get back in their car and drive to another store. So, you know, uh, because obviously, if you don't drive, you have to walk back also, so it's twice as far. So, I think that, um, it's kind of the walkability that people want versus the walkability that we can create. I mean, I think we need to, you know, one of the things we were, we've been thinking about is, is possibly, um, you know, breaking up that long drive and, and, and looking at , uh, possible other uses, um, along that way. Um, we've been toying with the dog park someplace and trying to put that someplace, and that would be, you know, maybe, what, I got a sweatshirt for the dog park? You like that, didn't you? Okay. Um, but, but, you know, there, I think there's things to do, but it's kind of hard, because we've had architects look at it and ideas, and people who are more innovative than I am about that kind of thing, but it's kind of a hard, but, um, I will tell you today that they were literally putting more crosswalks. They were literally painting them today. So, so that's obviously a simple thing, you know, with, with crosswalks and people being able to walk, um, and get around. But, um, I, I'm still working on it. I honestly, I, I don't, I mean, other than breaking it up, and, and you really can't, like, anything we would do that would add more pads, for instance, would all be stuff that would have to be approved by all the tenants and, and, and that kind of thing, and, and as well as, I think, zoning-wise and all that. So, that's the limitation. You can't just go in here and do what you want. But, I do feel like we're aware of it. People have talked about it. We get feedback on it, and we're still trying to figure out. So, I think what, what I think about is try to, for starters, improve walkability within sections. So, in front of Prost and around there, there's walkability. In front of the Ross section, there's walkability. And, and now, um, you know, Kids Empire is going in, or is in, next to Office Depot. And between that, and then when the pool opens next to it, you know, that'll be more children and, 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 um, young parents and that kind of thing. So, we'll have to make that walkable. So, I think it's easier to make areas of the center more walkable as opposed to, I mean, it's a long walk, like I said, from one end to the other, so.
It is a, it is a very long one.
We have ideas, believe me. I'd love to hear them.
We have a lot of ideas, I know.
Not tonight, but-
And then, um, let's see. Another question that I had is, I know you tried the artisan marketplace, those, was it five? Five of them, I think I read in here. I went to one of them.
Yeah.
I took my grandkids, and that was a lot of fun for them, got their face painted. Uh, is that something you think about bringing back, or, you know, kind of as a test run? What could be done? I know there are probably less vendors there than I'd hoped to see, so, how to get that word out and market that as, um, something that's attractive for small business owners?
Yeah. I'd like to correct with this. We just offer our space, and the city, um, I guess Allison and whoever, you know, organize those things. We're, we're not necessarily involved in that, but we offer our parking lot and, and, you know, contribute that, and then we get people to cooperate, and that kind of thing. So, we would love to see more activity, or that's good for a shopping center, but, um, you know, the trick is to probably get more tenants here, because tenants are there 365 days instead of five days. So, that really is what brings the vitality. But, you know, Prost, I was talking to Prost today, and, you know, talking about the concerts and, and that kind of activity there. And I know on summer nights, you know, it's, it's very walkable, very active down there. But, would love to see that 12 months, not, not three or four months.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of, um, how we all felt about that being more of like that main street, right? Is what, what keeps people there, like coffee shops, ice cream shops, things that make people sit there for a while. Um, and in the summer, Prost does an amazing job with those concerts. Um, but like you said, like, 12 months out of the year, what else is there? And I understand as a business owner that you can't control the market, you can't control bankruptcies, and all of the businesses that have left because they've gone bankrupt is not really something that you can control, or, or who wants to put a business there. Um, but I know, like, Painted Tree is such a unique, it's such a unique attraction, and it just feels like, um, like, not a lot of people know about it, too, and their marketing is lax. I had, I had a small booth in there for a while, and I left, because they put a lot on the individual vendors, and I know you probably don't control that, but, um, something that one, only one of our landlords does is they have, um, events tied around. I see there's some here, but like around Halloween, we had 300 people, families walk through our business, because the landlords sectioned a center of the, a huge parking lot, had a stage, um, bouncy castle, face painting, and did trick-or-treating and a scavenger hunt. So, people had to kind of check out the other businesses.
Right.
Um, and just things like that, too, to keep the businesses that are there.
Yes. Yeah, well, again, what, um, you know, Painted Tree, we, we have them in another location in Chicago, and then we thought they would be perfect here, so that was a good, you know, kind of extension. Um, but I think that, uh, and what, most of the, m- m- most of the marketing that we try to do are things that get people to, like you're saying, to go into the stores. So, so we wouldn't, you know, if we were gonna do that kind of event, it would be, go to five stores and get your card punched and get gift certificate or something like that. So, they had to go to five stores, not just show up in the parking lot. People being in our parking lot doesn't really help us. In fact, it kind of hurts us, because it's crowded and, you know, people trying to get the stores, gets in the way, kind of thing. But if you can get people to come and shop and tied to the stores, that, to your point, is really the key.
Yeah. That-
Do that. But I would love to do more stuff there. We, you know, uh, I'm hopeful we can fill up, you know, some of the, the land and, and use that in a different way, but while, while that land is available, great, let's, let's, we're happy to do stuff there. I mean, we're part of this community.
Right. And I think that's important. Um, I do appreciate the fact that, even if it's not the right tenant, that you didn't just sign them up, just because I know we're hoping. We've talked about that higher, um, higher elevation, or whatever you want to call it, attracting, um, a different type of business, or restaurant, or whatnot. So, really happy to hear that. Um, you answered, or you tou- you touched on the senior living facility, which was one of my questions, that I hope that also maybe makes the market more attractive for potential businesses going in that spot. Like, I can't believe that Bed Bath &amp; Beyond spot is still not rented out, because that is such a great, it's such a great location, the great visibility, the access, um, to I-25, so, I'm sure the right tenant-
In particular, we've been very careful to get the right tenant there. We've, we, we've had someone who offers a very good economic deal, and I just felt like, you know, for the next 10 years, 15 years to have that tenant there was not the right thing. Um, I'd love to do a supermarket there if that, if that were possible. Um, but there's a couple people that we have now that might, you know, who are talking about maybe dividing it into, into two and put two tenants there. So, we're, but we think that's kind of the gateway. That's what you see from the highway. Um, and we'd love that to be something that's, you know, great, not just pays rent.
Well, I think I've taken enough time. I appreciate everything you're doing. And then, um, also Allison, our director, Director Moding, and the luncheon learns that she's done, because I know safety is a, is a big thing, having our police department present to tenants, too, I think is great to involve them as well, and the safety aspect, just because that affects businesses as well. So, thanks for that partnership.
Sure. Well, I should say Allison has been terrific. She's, she's definitely, uh, who we go to if we have an issue or we need help, or, or what have you, and she's compliments us, and she pushes us, and makes us better, so thank you for that. Brooke is great, too. Um, you know, he, he's visionary about planning and what we should be doing and that kind of thing, and that's good. And Heather is, is terrific as well. So, and we do feel, I mean, there's lots of people, but those are some of the people who really help us a lot, and they're there, and we have a problem, they try to give us an answer. And that's, you can't help but more than, everyone has their own responsibilities, but you can't help but people, a city who helps you do your business instead of gets in the way. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. So, I have just a couple questions, I think, um, and I am hoping to continue the dialogue with council, so, don't, don't give up on me yet. Um, so, thank you for the signage. It does look great. Thank you for flying out and having a, a face-to-face conversation. We appreciate that. Um, I did have some questions about the map that I'll get to.
Sure.
Um, so you have said that you asked Trader Joe's, and they said no twice. So, that is super important information for us, because no matter what event we go to, that's the question we get. And it's, the residents do not understand that we have asked and you have asked, and they are just saying, no. Um, so, I mean, I think we just need to take that information forward. There's not a whole lot we can do about it. We can see them expanding all around us, and residents don't understand. They want it, and they want it now. Um, the, I did have a question about the swim school. So, this is the second swim school that has opened in our very small city that is competing with our own rec center. Um, how did that happen? I'm looking at my city manager, not you, but, because that seems to be direct competition with our own rec center? Are we feeling that, or no?
I don't know that we're feeling it yet. Um, I can follow up with Director Peterson, um, or if you're prepared to respond to that, um, you can. Director Peterson, um, I mean, it's, I don't know that we could have prevented them from coming into the city, is the honest answer.
Okay.
So, I think anytime there's, um, competition like this, um, I mean, I think both of those schools offer, um, an experience and an approach that, um, perhaps is different than ours. I think, you know, there's pricing considerations as well, where we remain highly competitive compared to a private vendor. Um, but I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Director Peterson, but can you elaborate on that at all?
Sorry, I can speak in some generalities, just that, just like in the private gym industry, typically, we're serving to fairly different populations. Those who are looking for that higher cost, more personalized service, um, are going to that private vendor. We tend to see those who are looking for a more traditional group swim lesson at a much lower cost, um, per lesson. We want our lessons to be a big part of what we do, but we're also looking at open swim, uh, to swim team and that, swim fitness and kind of a wider variety of programming. Does that help?
Yeah. That's great. Thank you.
We'd love to be the only show in town, but we know we don't get to control that.
I know. Well, I was just surprised, because we're pretty small, and to have a second swim school open back-to-back, it feels like was surprising. Okay. Um, so, the artisan fair, um, I guess I'm, I stumbled upon it one Saturday afternoon, and it looked like it was run by a Denver company? It was like a Denver community organizing?
No, I'd have to, I could find out, though. I mean, my, my, my property manager would know. I just don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
I know it wasn't us. We, we, I think donated our, contributed the land-
Okay.
And the space, but not, we didn't run the program.
Okay. And I, I didn't think we did either, so if you have them-
I mean, I, I can just contribute that there are private companies that put on these events at different locations throughout Denver, so they, you know, they solicit all of the, the vendors, they put together the, you know, the plan, they apply for the temporary use permit, all the things, um, and we review it and approve it or not approve it, so.
Okay. So, you did know about it? I didn't know anything about it when it, when I walked over there.
Yeah, and you know, they do, they, you know, they, I think the signage that they put out at the marketplace is, they're essentially a private business, um, operating, uh, these, these artisan markets throughout, throughout the Denver area.
Okay. The only reason it was curious to me is because we have wanted to do a variety of things in that spot, whether it was partnering with Prost to do a big Oktoberfest using all of that empty parking, or, uh, Christmas market that we could take up way more. Um, what, what is the process if we wanted to host something that was larger in this space?
Talk to Allison. Allison calls us. But, but, I mean, you know, the, the, I mean, the limits we have, we have leases, right? And the leases, people want parking, so if we just use the parking for something else, obviously, we, we can't do that. But, but we, we've tried to accommodate virtually everything the city's asked-
Okay.
And, and we try to do it. And if, it's not gonna hurt our tenants, and it's not gonna hurt the property, or it's not unsafe, or whatever, we'll happy to cooperate.
Okay. So, aside from Prost, on a busy day, I have never seen parking be an issue. Um, maybe Lowe's, and I can see there's a section, um, all the way up to the Tesla Chargers, which I love, by the way. That was brilliant. I love, by the way. That was brilliant. But, all the rest of the parking seems pretty open 100% of the time. So, are there, are there not areas in the center that we could use?
Well, I guess, you know, there's certain tenants, like Ross, the Ross parking lot is usually pretty well-filled. Certainly, PetSmart, I would say. There's some other tenants who don't. But, Sincetti certainly gets filled when they're, when they're busy, and as do the restaurants up front. But, I mean, if you want to use an area of the parking lot, ask us. And if it's not going to hurt us, we'd be happy to help. That's what we've consistently done. So, I think we're, it's good for us as long as it doesn't, but what I'm saying is if a tenant has a lease that says you can't do anything in this space, like Ross definitely has something in front of them that you can't do it there. So, we just can't do it there. It doesn't matter how much we want to do it. So, we, the bottom line is, we're happy to help, and we've been a good citizen. We'll do whatever we can as long as it doesn't, we don't think it's going to be deleterious to the property.
Okay. I guess that's what I was trying to define, is what does it mean, as long as it doesn't hurt us? Like, how, how would you potentially see an idea like that hurting?
Well...
If it takes over parking, I hear that, but...
Well, again, like, certain leases say you can't do that. And there's only certain places in the shopping center where we could do it even if we wanted to. So, we can't do it in a place that a retailer prohibits us from doing it.
Okay.
The parcel one is, is an area where no retailer has any restrictions over that. So, that's an area where we can do, you know, we can do that there. There's restrictions about, you know, the roads and the property, about what we can do in certain roads and restricting them. We don't own the Lowe's. Lowe's owns its own parcels. We don't have a control of that, for instance. Sincetti's, as a rule, is what we can do out there. Prost owns their parcels, so we can't do it in the Prost. So, there's only certain places that we actually own and control the parking and do that. So, basically, Allison knows what those areas are, and she says, we want to do something in this area, and for the most part, we said, sure.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at, like, say, the area in front of Famous Footwear, because there's four open tenants.
Yep.
So, I would assume there would be more space, because there's four empty spots. Or maybe not. I don't know. I mean, maybe it does sound more complicated. The reason I'm asking that is because this is a public meeting, and I want all of council to understand, and I want our residents to understand, that when we say, we want to do this, it's not as easy as it sounds. Right? So, if I wanted to say, we're going to put a Christmas market right in front of the painted tree, and you're going to say, no, you can't, because that's Lowe's area. Right? And so, those are the types of things that we need to be really clear about with our residents, because all ideas sound like amazing ideas.
Yeah, I would, I would turn it around to a positive, right? If you have a good idea, and it's feasible, then we're willing to work with you on it. But, there are restrictions. I mean, this is, you know, certainly, what time of year, Christmas happens to be the busiest time for some of our tenants, so that's the exact time they don't want something going on in the parking lot, because it interferes with their business, for instance. But, and then the question is, who's running it? Is it somebody who's reputable? Is it going to be, is it going to be safe? Is it going to be clean? Are they going to have security? Those are all questions we would want to know before we let someone use the parking lot. Same as if you were going to use one of your public facilities, you'd ask all those same questions. So...
Totally. On, I guess, on the flip side, I would think that adding something would bring people in to shop there, because that's what I have shared publicly that I struggle with, is if I'm going to go to Bath &amp; Body Works, for example, if I have a list of five places I need to tackle, I'm not going to this one, because there's not, there's not enough in this space to draw me to it, so I can get my to-do list done. So, when we're talking about diversity of tenants, where it's nice that we have a playplace and a swim school, that's not on my list of things to do, so I'm going to pick a different Bath &amp; Body Works, if that makes sense. So, when we're filling some of these spaces, and I know we had some questions that are kind of leading to the Trader Joe's doesn't like the space because of the demographic, but we're pulling in a different demographic by having a Five Below and a Didi's discounts. Does that make sense? So, how can we get a higher quality, or, dare I say, just more expensive anchor, to then compete with what Trader Joe's is looking for?
I mean, I think it's the other way around, is that the retailers choose locations based on what the demographics are. So, they, you know, the demographics are what they are, and things, like demographics don't change. You know, over time, they can change over a long period of time, 10, 15, 20 years, but over a couple of years, they generally don't change that much. So, retailers have very scientific studies of demographics. They look at the people, and they decide whether a location is good or not. So, we would always try to get the best tenants we can, the highest rents, and how are the highest rents? The highest rents are by the most sales. There's no market rent in retail, it's by sales. So, someone who does the most sales, that's who can pay the highest rents. Right? So, retailers look at the demographics, they decide. I don't decide. We don't decide. They decide what the demographics are, or they analyze the demographics, and they decide whether their store will be successful here or not. So, I mean, that's just, that's just how retail is done. That's how, that's how they choose their locations. I mean, similarly, that, that, you know, I had a shopping center once in a rural area, and someone said, well, why don't you get Bloomingdale's? I was like, because Bloomingdale's doesn't want to come here. I'd love to get Bloomingdale's here, but they don't want to come here. This isn't, you know, there's only one in the whole state, and this isn't where they're going. So, there's, you know, to some degree, we, like, what we did with Trader Joe's, for instance, is we paid money for another study that would give them the facts, give them, and try to make the argument. But, at some point, they can decide whether they want to listen or not. So, I think certainly if anyone has ideas about tenants they'd like, I'm happy to call them. You know, we'll call them. If we haven't called them already, we'll call them again. It doesn't, you know, we're, we're on your side. We'd like to get the best tenants we can here. But, they make a lot of decisions. It's not just, it's not just me making the decision who I want or I don't want.
Well, I guess the overarching question that we always seem to have is, how can we help? Because if you could help us with some messaging, because this looks great, and all the statistics look great, but our residents still show up and say, it's dilapidated, it's empty, it's not a place that I'm going. So, how, and they, I mean, it's like the number one thing. They show up to a mayor's coffee, they show up to a ward meeting, and they're like, what are you going to do about the marketplace? And we end up in a place of, we can only do so much. We got to call Brad. Right? So, how, how do we move perception? The signage helped, but I think it's, it's, I don't know. The resident perception is not great with this marketplace, so we need to figure that out.
Well, I'd be happy to talk to you about it as much as I can. But, the bottom line is, your residents are shopping at this center, because the sales of the tenants prove that out. So, maybe the people who come to the meetings aren't those people, but a lot of people are shopping at some of these stores. Stores are successful, and they're doing, doing well here. So, you know, you don't have the issue of, it's kind of the Yogi Bear thing, right? The place is so crowded, no one goes there anymore. It's kind of the same thing. I mean, these stores are doing really well, so that is the ultimate test in our business, that it's a popular place. If someone doesn't like an aspect of it, that's, you know, they can have their own opinion. Everyone can have an opinion. But, the fact of the matter is, this is a successful shopping center in terms of sales. If someone doesn't like an aspect of it, then we can try to improve it, and we're happy to improve it. But, the facts are, the sales are good. So, you have to start with that, and that is the measure of people liking it. And, like you said, if people come to the center, then that's a good thing. I, I don't know, is it dilapidated? I don't know what part of the center is dilapidated.
I think they use that word because of the empty space. So, if you're walking from Office Depot to PetSmart, it looks more empty, because you're walking by five open pieces. Right? So, if that's your path, it feels more empty. Or, they were very upset that Jo-Ann's closed, and so, yes, we love a good Spirit Halloween, but there's a whole section in between Prost and Sincetti's that's open as well. And they get worried that vacancy means that it's not thriving.
You should, you know, show them an article that shows that Jo-Ann closed every location in the United States.
Oh, I know. They don't think it's our fault. But, it's just another empty block.
Well, I believe, first of all, from my perspective, empty is bad for me, too. Every one of those reds is rent that I'm not getting, that my investors aren't getting. So, we're on the same page. I'm trying to lease the space. You know, like I said, I could have leased some spaces to people who would be substandard, and they would have even been less happy, perhaps. So, we're trying to get the right tenants, and I think we have done, like I said, we've leased, you know, every space that's green there is a new lease since we've been there, and every space that's yellow is a tenant that we've extended. So, there's still a lot of opportunity, there's things done, but we've, we've done, you know, we've done the best under the circumstances. Unfortunately, when, before we bought the center, there were tenants who we didn't know were going to go bankrupt, and they did over this period of time. But, I think the best thing you should tell them is that there's, you know, retail is a continuing, continuing dynamic, and it's continuing to change, and this center is no different than others. But, in this center, you have a very good, high-quality property in terms of sales and tenant performance, which is ultimately the most important thing. Now, if you want different kinds of tenants there, you know, I think that's maybe not something you can control. You know, this is just, this is, the people who do successful are the people who are here. All the people who are here are successful. And the people who've left have mostly left, not because of Northglenn, they've left because another location or the whole chain was bankrupt, and it didn't, didn't succeed. So, I, I think, you know, I would tell them that you've worked hard, and the council's worked hard, and your staff has worked really hard to do the best they can, and do a lot of great things for this property. And, you know, the signage was something that, that you felt was important, and we did that. There's some tenants we put in. Prost, you know, was not the most successful economic deal we've ever done, but we did that because we thought that was the right tenant. So, you've made dramatic progress through a center that was 40% vacant, that had a bunch of problem tenants, and you should take credit for that. You should tell them, you know, here's what it was like when we started, and here's what it is today. You've made a tremendous amount of progress. Has it been enough? No. That's fine. You can have that opinion. But, certainly, there has been dramatic progress, and you should appreciate that, and they should appreciate that.
So, final question. You had mentioned that if we wanted to make a change, that the city would have to change the code. Is that something that you're open to?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, look, you have a series of codes that we have to follow, and if we want to suggest something that doesn't follow that, then we would go to staff, and they'd be entirely reasonable, and they would work with us and say, yes, this is something we should change if we would better it, or, no, this is something we're not willing to change. So, the staff has been incredibly helpful in working through that. But, you know, there are restrictions on all properties in your town that what you can and can't do. But, I think the staff has been incredibly supportive of the changes we've, that we think are better. They've suggested some things that are better. We've done some things that they told us to do, that they suggested, and it's been, that's why it's been a good partnership.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to share a little bit about, like, I think to me, I mean, I live very close to the marketplace, right? Like, I literally walk to Prost from my house, you know, throw the kids in the wagon, walk across the bridge and walk. And so, when you talk about walkability, like, I feel that a lot, because I think, you know, I'm obviously not going to walk to Lowe's, most likely, because if I'm going there, it's going to be hefty stuff. But, I think, I think the size of it does make me feel a little daunting of like, okay, I'm going to walk the whole horseshoe, that sort of thing. I also, when I think about the marketplace, to me, it is a place of convenience, more than, more than a place to, like, hang out at the moment. Right? Like, I need something from Lowe's, I go there quickly. With Ross, it's like, I need a something from some, like, for a specific event or something like that to, or PetSmart, you know, it is a place of convenience versus, like, a destination, which I think is like where a lot of our heads at. I mean, we haven't been able to articulate that. And I think with the excitement around, like, and like, even like Sincetti's is like, to me, it's a quick, convenient thing. Like, Sunday's, you know, lunch is huge for them. And so, I think it's like a place of convenience that it's easy to go to. But, I do think, like, the back half of the marketplace is becoming more of like a destination, like bringing my kids to Kids' Empire. Honestly, I'm kind of stoked on more swimming lessons, because the competitiveness to get into the rec center is bonkers. And so, you know, either my kids don't know how to swim at some point, though I assume they'll learn, or we can, we have other options. You know what I mean? And so, I think, like, I see the change happening of a place of convenience to a place to, versus a destination location. And so, I think, I see the vision, I, and I see, you know, the, like, oh, it's like constantly, there is, even looking at the map, right, there's so much parking there. And I think, like, when I'm in it, I don't really notice it, because I'm in and out and that sort of thing. And I think, like, I don't know, I do see, like, there's a sheer amount of parking. The size and the shape of it does not lead to, like, strolling down the street, bebopping into stores. That's like, that's not the vibe, it's not the layout, it's not the UX design. Right? So, it is a place of convenience. And so, I think if we flip our mindset into that, I think that's a lot more helpful. And especially, like, with the senior housing, like, what would be useful for them for a convenience? Right? I'm going to say urgent care. I don't mean it in that kind of way, but probably. You know what I mean? I think some things like that, like, if we think about convenience to our neighbors, like you said, daycare, and my ears perked up. You know, if I could walk to daycare, that'd be sick. Especially with, like, the other child-friendly things coming in, understanding our demographics, I know that word has come up a lot, and I think understanding that we are changing, and our community is looking a lot more like my family. Right? We moved from Denver, we have, we have two kids. Like, we are like the demographic moving into this area as our population ages out. And so, thinking through, like, what's good for us and my family? Like, would we like a Trader Joe's? Sure. Is childcare where more important to me at this moment? Yes. And so, I think it is a base understanding of what our community actually needs, and that is what I see in the marketplace, is a place that is convenient for me, that I can shop in Northglenn, you know, throw a Skyzone in there, and my kids would never leave, you know? So, but, I just really wanted to say that, just to add to the conversation of what we're having. Thank you.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to just continue where Councilmember Burns left off. I think really, you know, part of the problem is, when you talk about retail, it's like the Field of Dreams sort of paradox, you know, build it, will they come? And I would totally agree with Councilmember Burns. I think you have to really understand what is the demand signal for the area, and whether you have the people of the right demographic that are going to be clients and go to those sort of retail offerings that you're going to provide. I mean, you think about the classic marketing paradigm of location, location, location. Well, you got that. And you have the other piece about, well, making sure you're putting yourself in a sweet spot where there are a lot of potential customers. So, you know, when I sit here and I listen to the conversation about, you know, what we want, I think we also have to be realistic about what, what is going to work economically for the retail developer, because obviously, we may be a stakeholder, but I'm assuming you have other shareholders that are really looking at more of the economics, for sure. Equity holders, your board, all that. So, I do want to at least acknowledge that, that you're not just only listening to us, clearly.
But, I do listen. But, but I would, but it's also the tenants, too, right? So, the tenants are deciding for themselves and their businesses where they want to go.
Oh, for sure.
So, it's, it's really a mosaic of all these things coming together.
For sure.
And, you know, I think, as was said, that this is a place where a lot of people are pleased with a lot of the stores. No one's pleased with all the stores, and that's more an accurate depiction than, you know...
It's the free market. And so, the one thing that just comes to mind to me is, it just reminds me about the training that both Mayor Protim and I attended two weeks ago at CML, and that is the, they basically thumbnailled the Urban Land Institute workshop, which actually, it puts you in the shoes of the retail developer. And you have to figure out, like a game of Tetris, how to fit in all these various pieces, whether it's residential, retail, putting in a government, or a nonprofit, and trying to figure out all the economics to make sure it all pencils out, i.e., from the perspective of the, of the developer, are you getting your return on investment? What's the payback period? Are you, as the city, getting your sales tax revenues to be able to support said project? And I, I would like to just offer this up again as an opportunity for us as a council to get a little bit smarter and more educated about that point of view, so that when we have conversations, like with you, Mr. Hutensky, you know, we are, we are having a better, fuller, richer, more holistic conversation. So, that's what I wanted to offer up. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, I'm going to jump on that really quickly, just because I agree with you. And when I look at our current strategic plan, we just put it together, we just voted on it. In 2025, Section 4.3, Northglenn Marketplace Investment, says, partner with HCP in their planning processes for the center and align the city's sub-area planning efforts underway. So, that's this meeting, perhaps, or a good starting point. And then, we had, identify opportunities for parking lot activation to drive foot traffic throughout the center. So, if after a conversation with HCP, I guess I toss that question back to council. So, if you've learned things tonight that cause you to dial back, something that we have set out in our strategic plan, I think we need to have that conversation. I know that during this planning process, the Northglenn Marketplace Investment as a topic came up over and over and over. And so, it is something that is a curiosity. So, if we need to increase communication around it, if we need to say, we need to do a full, you know, comms video and push and communication, and so that our residents have all of this understanding that we're gaining tonight, then I think we should do that. Because from my seat, Councilmember Condo, we talk about it over and over and over. We list it as a priority, but if now, after meeting with HCP again, we're thinking, no, we understand, there's restrictions, there's nothing we can do, there's, you know, it's too complicated, and we just have to trust Brad and move on. Like, if that's where we are, then that's where we are. But, we had highlighted it as a strategic plan priority.
Understand, Madam Mayor. I'm not saying just trust Brad. I think part of it is, we need to get a little bit, is this thing on? We need to get a little bit more, we need to improve our understanding of how retailer developer kind of thinks about the world through their lens. Because I think we probably, and rightly so, we represent the electorate and our residents, but sometimes there is more to business. I mean, it's very complicated. And if we're not being, if we're not sympathetic and understanding from their end, then we're just going to continue to knock heads, and we're not going to make progress. That's the reason why I said what I said, is that we can continue to have, and ask Brad to fly out here and meet with us, but we're, I just, I feel like we're having a repeat of last year's conversation, or whenever it was the last time you were out here.
We are.
So, that's why I'm asking that we actually spend a little bit of time to get smarter, so the next interaction that we have, it's not, it's not continuing to log our heads. It's, we're able to figure out how to expand and create value.
So, I, I mean, this slide right here, if someone said, nothing's going at the property, you can say, since the last time we talked, this is, these are facts. This is exactly what has happened. And if someone, you know, at least start off with this, these are facts, that four new leases, five leases extended, $1.2 million in signage. That's like a fact. You know, maybe they don't notice that, or whatever. Maybe they need to be reading they don't notice that or whatever, maybe they need to be reinforced, but I think this is how I would at least start the conversation if I might, you know, and then obviously, people always want to make things better, but I mean, there has been a lot of, uh, just since last time we talked, really.
So, Councilmember Noiki, to answer your question, how do we get smarter? Uh, might I suggest that we, uh, look to staff and potentially have EOLI, Urban Land Institute, do a technical assess program, uh, I'm sorry, a technical assessment program. It's a half day sort of seminar where we are actually going to do SimCity on steroids. And we, we actually go through this process of, of rebuilding a two square mile burnt out part of a city. Literally, that is the scenario that I went through. And you, you really do work through some of the fundamental mechanics of where do you put retail? How, how are you going to lay roads? What are the sightlines that you want to maintain? Perhaps maybe that is important to some people.
I would absolutely do.
Do you put in a homeless shelter or not? And what kind of incentives do you need to offer the developer to be able to do that? Because obviously, home shelter, homeless shelter is not going to generate a whole lot of RMBL, right? Those sort of things. I think if we went through that exercise, not only would it help us with trying to figure out what we can do with the North Glen Marketplace, it could help us be better informed and smarter about what we're going to do about Phase Three Civic Center. Or what are we going to do with the Washington Point area? So, um, again, I, I can defer to Director Saboda, he could talk to it in more detail than I can. But I, I really think that going through this exercise might be, uh, worth the time and effort. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Noiki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Brad?
Yes.
If you could ma- wave a magic wand and change, drastically change anything about kind of the marketplace kind of, wha- what do you think that would be?
Well, I, I definitely, the OEA would, you know, the, the, operating covenants, uh, you know, that's, that drives the center, that is incredibly, um, restrictive as far as what we can do.
Can you explain that a little more to me?
It's, it's, uh, when the center was originally, um, opened, I think, as, as a mall, there was restrictions about what you could do in certain parts of the property, such as new construction, such as parking, such as usages, that kind of thing. So that restricts what we can do in certain places.
Okay.
So that, that's probably the single most, single biggest thing.
That's what comes to mind?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Um, and for our purposes, I'd love to, and, and I'm going to defer to you just for your time and, uh, I'd love to hear from Director Saboda over there, because I see him taking notes. I'd love to hear his impressions on this. Would that be okay, or?
Well, I think it's part of a larger conversation that we're going to have with economic development and as uh, Councilmember condo already brought up, the Civic Center Master Plan in Washington Port, or Point redevelopment, like this is all, this is all one big soup. It's, it's much bigger than the marketplace. Um, if we're looking at vision and values and direction that council would set, I think that's different, but it's, this is one small piece of a lot that's going on. So definitely, um, Director Saboda will be weighing in, just maybe not till we have more, more council members have shared.
Okay. Uh, Brooke, if you're around afterward, I'd love to chat too.
Councilmember Goff.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brad. Um, yeah, I know we've had discussions about the OEA and, and, and the past sort of explained in more detail what it is and what some of the restrictions are. So that is an obstacle, but to get back to what the mayor was, um, asking about, like, in reference to our um, long range planning as a city, I feel like, um, I, I would like to know like what the city actually could do, like for example, do we need to look at the, changing the code for that, or zoning for that one parcel? You know, what, if, for me, the walkability piece is really important, and I think it would help especially in light of, you know, building, um, you know, homes nearby and the apartments of the senior homing, senior housing and all that. But when I have been there and my husband and I are going to different places and one person gets dropped off and then the other person goes to another, to walk across that parking lot, there's like no shade, it's dangerous because there aren't really clear places to walk, um, and, you know, to get from a lot of one point to another. Um, and I don't know if that's, you know, how much of that is going to be impacted by the OEA and/or whatever agreements you have with your res, your tenants. But I just would, I think overall, what I'd like to maybe know more about as we go into this is what the city could do. You know, like, I mean, I know we can look at zoning, I don't know, can we, can we plant trees, can we, and I don't know, I don't, you know, offer landscaping advi- I don't know what we could do to help. But that, I think the, the sense that, um, I get from residents who are wondering what's going on with it and feel like nothing's happening there is this, that huge expanse of parking lot that's mostly empty, most of the time. And I, in Ross and all that up at the front, that's different. But when you look right in the center, that whole middle section from Lowe's to, you know, the, some of these empty shops and the Woodley's and all that, empty. So if there was, I don't know what else we could offer to do to help fill that up, or I don't know. But anyway, that, that's where I would like to, to go with this next time we get together is what, what can we do? What are, what are our, you know, I mean, I know there's all these constraints, but what could we do within that, or what, do we have power to change?
I think that's a great question. Um, blending some ideas that I heard, I'm back in the strategic plan. But when we're talking about this particular, the business retention and growth, we have said as a city that the definition of that is that we attract and retain a wide range of businesses to maintain a strong local economy that cultivates community pride. So we put a lot of pieces together, right? The community pride piece, the local economy, and we know that that's, I hear that you're saying that the sales are good and it's a successful marketplace, and that's awesome. Um, again, the perception is that, that the empty shops could be contributing to our decrease in sales tax month over month, so just wanting to throw that out there. Um, I think we do have a communications problem, and we probably need to make sure that we're getting information out to residents in a proactive way, so that they understand some of what you're sharing. If we, if we say, hey, guess what, we extended the mountain man's lease, that doesn't mean anything, right? But to put it all together and say, look, all of these companies are staying, and these are the new ones we have, as opposed to what we're currently doing, which is also great, is highlighting each new business one ribbon cutting at a time. Right? We probably need to tell, tell the story a little differently. Uh, Councilmember Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to piggyback on some of the things I've heard, so just to clarify, clarify from my own learning, the OEA we own, or like the city decided?
No, that's a, it's a, an agreement between the landowners of the property. Um, and basically, uh, there's, at the time we bought it, there were three landowners, right, that where, where Lowe's is one, Shopping Center is one, and then where, uh, K&amp;G is and Woodley's, that one was a third owner. We bought that tent, that person out because they were really stopping us from doing everything. So now we own two of the three votes on the OEA.
Okay.
But we still have to get approval. And we, we can't just make changes to the OEA without getting approval. And then some of the leases say you can't make changes to the OEA, so that kind of piggybacks upon it. But over time, we have, we could have done Prost, we had to go to eight anchor tenants, get approval from eight of them, amend the OEA to do that, and we did all that, that's what we did to get Prost done. We have to pay money to people to do that, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's a difficult process and a time consuming, but it can be done.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I would agree with what Councilmember Goff said, just having, I live near this, and I think part of our residents' perception is the empty parking lot. It does look like an eyesore, and I think when people see empty parking lots, um, they think the businesses are not thriving. Um, and typically, I'll, I use PetSmart, for instance, and I'll walk from the corner of Sinzetti's across, and it isn't a pleasant walk, it, it is just a concrete slab. Um, so I think that is part of our residents' pushback on that, that it is just unsightly. Um, and then I do know just from, uh, the past few months of talking with our residents, um, and I'm just saying this so my opinion's out there, they do not want, in Ward Four, they do not want more apartments. We do not want that there. I know a lot of people are not happy with the senior center, the senior living. Um, that's not popular in Ward Four, so that's, it's not really what our citizens want over there. However, since the senior living is there and we can't do anything about that, I'm wondering if some of that open space there on Melody Drive, if that could almost be an annex for the rec center or the senior center, where we could have something where seniors could come across, would attract that attention, whether it's just a little annexed senior center or something where they could come. Perhaps those people who cannot come up to the rec center or senior center. And then I think I also just want to piggyback on what Councilmember Burns was saying, it doesn't hold that destination piece. I think specifically for the 45 to 60-year-old crowd. Um, there are a lot of things for younger children. Um, but if you don't have younger children, you really don't have a lot of need to go there. Um, and let's, let's be real, when I had younger children, I didn't have extra money to spend on things. Now I'm in that 45 to 60-year-old range, and I do have that extra fun money. However, what is drawing me there? And so that's just, I mean, we do have a lot of young families, but we also, I think this isn't representative of the demographic of our entire city, it only speaks to some. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't going to talk about comms and marketing, but since you brought it up, um, I will. I think, I mean, obviously, the fact that none, like, I did not know about like the cute little market that popped up in there, and I live there, huge miss. Is it the fact that we have 17 Facebook pages? Probably. Has a lot to do with it. Our general structure of how we communicate to residents is probably a big flaw there. Um, I, I also think the city, and I know I've talked about this with a lot, and I know that, um, but I, I do think that like, you know, part of marketing the city is showing people what we're doing and telling our story and highlighting all of the cool things that we're doing. Like, I didn't know there was daycare coming in. Life change, could be life-changing for me, literally life-changing. And so I think a lot of this needs to be a constant drumbeat and a constant reform of how we talk to our residents. I know we're talking about this a lot right now. Um, but I think, looking at the data, right, and then he, and hearing what we hear, that's a literal miscommunication. And so I think understanding all of that, and there is a little bit of, with good marketing comes good business, right? So it is a little bit of, of, if we build it, they will come in that situation. Like, I know we can't, you know, we don't own Prost Instagram page, but like sharing how packed it is on a Friday night, that's awesome. Right? And then understanding what could be there, or like going to the swim school, like highlighting our residents' stories using our local businesses, I think is a huge content opportunity as well. Um, this is an internal conversation, sorry, you're just like standing there. Um, so I, I think like, I think there's a lot of potential for growth and I am, I'm gonna just like say this, is like, I think, when I think of the marketplace, I see the different sections, right? Like, the southwest, like the Ross's corner, like that section's not really for me, like I don't really go over there, right? But Pilates, nail salon, hair salon, that's for me. The block over for my kids, that's for me. Prost, that's for me. Lowe's, it could be for me if I got more handy sometimes, but like, I see the sections of it that are for me and my demographic. And I think when you start thinking of it in like those chunks and like those little walkable spaces, it's a little bit better. And I do, and the biggest thing I think that's helped me wrap my head around this space, because I, from my understanding, this was like a mall, like long before I was born. And so when you think of it like that, like that middle road, there were shops on either side of that. Right? So when you think of the UX design, well, it was inside, wasn't it?
It was an indoor mall.
Yeah, so you have like shops on like all sides. Right? So you like, you looped around, like a track.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like an old fashioned mall, like
Yeah.
Stranger Things.
Yeah. Exactly.
I don't know what that means, but I, I, I used to go to the mall. Um, when my mom would drive me. Um, so like, I, I understand like if when switching it from an indoor only facility to an outdoor, so like walking, so what you said, Councilmember Goff, like walking across a parking lot is a lot less fun than like walking past all the stores inside and like thinking of it like a track. And so from a, like a UX, like a design, like a human psychology perspective, I think like that's probably our biggest hurdle. But when you break it down into the chunks of like which sections are for me kind of situation, I think that is also helpful. Um, but yeah, I think we could do a better job marketing and communications. That will be my final point. Thank you.
Councilmember Heremio.
Mayor, you have any more questions for me? Because I, I actually have another meeting after this.
Yes, we do. I think so. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for being here in person, that means a lot to us. Um, I think that we can have a great partnership to utilize parcel one for community events that we've already done before, trunk retreats recently, you know, more towards the holidays, things like that. I just think that we need to have a great partnership for that, and I'd love to continue that. Thank you.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, downside to going last, everybody touched on, I was going to ask about the OEA, just because our residents probably don't understand what that is. But you probably touched on it enough, I hope that maybe they have a better understanding, but that's part of that miscommunication as well. Um, if you want to do a, a super quick, high-level overview, so residents understand what that is and that, how that can hinder, um, what happens, that was one part. The second part was to touch on what the mayor said, communications failure, and a hundred percent of what Councilmember Burns said as well, just because, again, I'll just use the easy example of the painted tree. Everybody I meet from Thornton, Westminster, Federal Heights, our neighbors, don't even know what that is. And I haven't seen it on the news. I'm like, this could be a really e- easy, free way to market it, get a news story. We're about to approach the holidays. Um, and there's Prost, you can shop, go to Prost. I mean, so all of those things I think are great, but like we have some really good opportunities, and yes, we do have a communications failure. I will say that. Um, that is one thing. And then third part is, let's not forget that Nura is a big partner in all of this as well. I sit on the Nura Board, and I know that is, that has been discussions, that this is an important topic as well to Nura, um, as well as the studies that we have out right now. So, um, just want to make sure we remember that Nura is also an important partner, and we can't forget about that.
Tremendous and was a key player in everything that's happened here, no question.
Is there a follow-up meeting, Director Moding with, uh, with Brad and Nura? Anytime soon? Random question that's popped in my head.
I don't know that we have any plans for a follow-up meeting, if that's something we need to discuss, we can certainly do that on, uh, next.
I'll bring it up in Communications next Nura meeting. All right, great. Um, so the only thing I would add is if you want to explain exactly really quick what the OEA is, because we've all kind of touched on it, and I don't know that people understand how that hinders. Thank you.
So, so the OEA was something that was designed, when the center was, were started, so Mervyn's was where, um, K&amp;G and, uh, Woodley's is. That was one tenant. Um, the rest, the center, Shopping Center owner and Lowe's, those were the three parties to the OEA. So what they wanted to do, because there's three different landowners, is restrict what people would do on their land so that no one would do something that would hurt the shopping center, such as not, not have enough parking, such as doing construction, such as signage, such as uses, things that would be deleterious to the shopping center. So it was the agreement between three landowners, and they did it to, um, improve the property, but it was written, um, you know, I don't know, 30, 40 years ago, and so things that were there, used, there were uses that weren't even around, um, then that are, that are now. And so it's, it's outdated, but it lasts for, I think, 50 years or 55 years or something like that. So it goes on for, for a while, and it just restricts, it was basically made to keep up the quality of the shopping center, but it's so old now that it actually, I think, restricts the quality of the shopping center, quite honestly. And so like I said, when we had, when we did Prost, Prost, um, the beer, the brewery was manufacturing. And so there were, that was prohibited as a use in the shopping center, manufacturing. And there are tenant leases that restricted it, and the OEA restricted it. So we had to modify the OEA to allow manufacturing in that location, and also go to eight anchor leases and get approval from them to do manufacturing in that location. So the idea was, why didn't you want manufacturing? Because they didn't want, um, you know, Because they didn't want, you know, a rendering plant or something like that in the middle of a shopping center. It made a lot of sense. When you think about a brewery as beautiful as Prost, that's also manufacturing. So because of that, we had to go and get approvals from all those things. It took a long time and it was very expensive for us, but we did it. We thought Prost was worth it.
And 55 years, that's a really long time. The last thing I'll say is, a nice park, like the Orchards has like a park in the middle. The Outlets has like a park. I mean, that, I know we can throw ideas and it may not happen, but it's just something that could activate the middle of that space. To Councilmember Goff's point of trees and shade, it's just something, that's an idea. You ask for ideas, so.
I love them.
Thank you.
So, loving ideas. How do we move forward with new ideas? So if we, if we were to take Mayor Protam's idea of activating that middle space, if it's a rezoning, if it's, we have to talk to all the other tenants and talk about the OEM, like how, what are there, are there action steps that we can, we can take to move forward?
If you have an idea and you tell Allison or Brooke, then they'll call me and we'll, you know, work on it and see if it's feasible. You know, some ideas take, you know, take five years to do. Some of them take 10 years from there. But over time, you know, if you have enough time and enough money, you know, a lot of, a lot of bigger changes can be made. But right now, I think, you know, the property is successful. I guess that's what people have to understand. This is a successful retail property. Things that have happened to it, such as Jo-Ann filing bankruptcy, has nothing to do with his properties, nothing to do with North Glenn. It's they fight, they lost all their stores throughout the country.
Right.
So when you look at that, you can say, you know, wow, the store's now vacant, but it's vacant because the whole chain went bankrupt, not because of anything that happened in North Glenn or anyone could have done anything about it. So a lot of the things that have impacted the property are that. And what we do, because we're in that business, we know what to do when that happens. We try to lease it to another senate. We're already thinking about what's the best use for the Jo-Ann, but it takes time and it takes money. And, and, you know, we, that's what we have to do. But it has to be what tenants want in the property, not, and it also has to be things that are going to be successful here. We don't want to put someone in who fails a year down the road. So it's a combination of all those things. And I guess I would say it's a, it's a, it's a puzzle and we're one player in it and the city's one player and as is the tenants. And all that comes together. And that's the, that's the business, that's the whole business of what we do and continue to do. And I think, I would, I guess I would tell the people out there that tremendous progress has been made at this property, you know, since we've owned it. And they should take great pride in that. They should be really happy with that and always pushing us and pushing the center to be better. But at the end of the day, it's far better than it was. When we took over, like I said, there were, there were lots of tenants who were trying to leave. There were lots of deferred maintenance. There were roofs that were bad. There were parking lot that was in bad shape. All that stuff has been improved. The signage, I mean, there's a dramatic improvement. So again, it's jar, it's jar half-empty or jar half-full. I mean, it's really, there's a lot to be very proud of this property and what's happened. And there's always things to make it better. We should all keep working to make that happen.
Okay. So to sort of sum up as we wrap up, to Councilmember condo's point, this presentation is very similar to the last time you were here. I think the sentiment is the same, right? It used to be bad, now it's great, and we're open to collaboration. I think the additional slides of current changes, even some council members didn't know, so we got some new information tonight. But some of the old kind of historical pieces, you grounded us in that as we started. I think council is going to need to have future conversations about what, what new ideas we might have so that we can put them in a more clear package to our directors to take forward to you. And I would hope that they would be considered seriously. If there's any way, I know it's expensive and it may not be feasible quickly, but I think we continue to put it in our strategic plan as a priority. So you're probably going to keep hearing from us. But thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate it. All right, up next, community development block grant funding options. We do have Director of Planning and Development, Brooks Faboda, with us to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So in the packet, what we have is, the Adams County staff had recently reached out to us to say that they have a, sorry, they have a timeliness issue associated with the overall allocation of their CDBG funds from HUD. So the City of North Glenn's role in this is that we are a city of less than 50,000 people. We are not a direct recipient of CDBG funds. We are a sub-recipient to the county through an IGA. Historically, over the last several years, we have allocated funds towards the county's minor home repair program. Under our current IGA, that, the money that we have allocated to us is reserved exclusively for our residents through their program. As of right now, we have over $700,000 that's accumulated as a result of a lack of participation from residents in North Glenn. Now, when I started here, we used to have probably 100 applicants a year and we never had enough money to serve. Over the course of time, that has changed. There's been other factors associated with it. But today, we offer more money for restoration and effort for, and through minor home repair than we did when we started. However, we just don't have that many people utilizing the program. We have been working diligently over the last three years to communicate and make this available. And late last year, I was informed that there was a big uptick and I was like, great, so we don't have a spending issue. And then I found out it was like seven applications that's happening. So as a result of that, the county staff were saying, do you have any projects that we can use, utilize this excess amount so that we can avoid our timeliness issue? And so staff sat down internally and reviewed what current projects we had. And the one that currently meets that timeliness factor would be the Odell Berry project. And so right now, this, if the council were to consider this as a potential project, this would be the last dollars in for that project. It was approved? Or is pending approval recommendations? I'll let him explain it in detail.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last week, we've not shared this with you yet because it's not formalized, but our Adams County Open Space Advisory Board did give us a favorable recommendation on our $1.8 million request for funding for Odell Berry Park. We are awaiting confirmation from the Board of County Commissioners. Typically, those have been approved per the OSAB's recommendations. So that was good news, but we are waiting for the county commissioners to finalize that award.
So with that being said, a couple of things on the, on the, on the future allocation for '25 and '26, that would still remain with minor home repair. I would also mention to council that if in the future we were to look to reevaluate that annual allocation to other programs or projects, that City of North Glenn residents would still be eligible to apply to the Adams County Minor Home Repair Program. There is ample funds and resources in that and other communities take advantage of it. We just restrict our account to make sure that we have money so that if there ever was a high demand for the program, that we, our residents would not be short on that. But that has not been an issue for the last several years. So also attached to the, to the staff report are all of the other eligible programs and projects that we could do. And so if council would rather staff pursue some other effort or initiative, we would be happy to explore those options as well. The one thing I do want to mention with particular capital projects is that this triggers Davis Bacon, which is a labor and wage requirement and a reporting requirement for the federal government. As a general rule, if a project's less than $5 million, it adds about 30, 40% of administrative costs to a, to a project. And so, for instance, with the 120th project, it was a $17 million project and it was federalized. It had really no bearing or impact on that. When we've done smaller projects lesser than that, like with, historically, there were times we did concrete paving projects. It literally reduced the amount of available budget we had to replace sidewalks and crossing areas because we had to, we had to federalize the project. It was such a smaller budget. So that's one of the variabilities in this. And with, with the Odell project, it's already been federalized, so there's really not much of an implication with this particular dollars coming in. I think what we have struggled with historically with different projects is this federalization aspect, because we really only get $250,000 a year. And so when you have this amount of money, it still takes away from the value of what we're trying to do is with the best bang for our buck for these, for these projects. So with that, I'll open up to any questions that council may have.
Councilmember Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director Faboda. So a couple, and this might be for Director Peterson, but so what is the total now that we have for the park and what kind of shortfall and then also inflation? I mean, do we know like where we might be with what we still need?
We do. So assuming that the 2.8, or 1.8 million dollars from Adams County Open Space is authorized, we have a shortfall of $780,000, yes, $780,000. So this is $760,000. That would put us within $20,000 of our $6 million goal.
Okay. And that's from our original like projections?
We have increased that original from 5 million to 6 million to account for any implications from Davis Bacon or other increases in costs.
Wonderful. Good planning. So then my, the next comment I would have is just, you know, I, I'm of course in favor of directing this money to the Odell Berry Park, no surprise. But if we continue on with this program, the Community Development Block Grant, if whatever, we continue to get future, you know, funding in the future, a suggestion or a question I might have is, you know, then I think the name is kind of misleading for, like if I was a resident and I needed, I don't know, like a new roof or something, weeds pulled or, you know, those dreadful Tree of Heaven trees. I don't know that I would know that the Community Development Block Grant was where to go to get help with that.
So we have done multiple social media and connection articles about the Minor Home Repair Program. We don't, we don't market it or brand it as Community Development Block Grant. We, we market it as Minor Home Repair for up to $25,000, but it's for income-qualified residents. And I think one of the things that you've probably heard from our other studies and efforts with the housing study and other, other information that we've shared with council is that the turnover in our demographics is such that we're seeing fewer and fewer people who are actually eligible because of how much turnover has happened in the community. When I started here, pretty much the entire city was income-qualified. But then when you get into the substances tracks, it's a little bit different. But the changeover in just the 14 years I've been here is just dramatic, because even places that were 70% are now 10 and others that were 30 are now 60. It's just, it's amazing to see from a demographic standpoint how much this, the community has changed from that standpoint.
Okay, well, yeah, I guess, I guess that does make sense. I do see a lot of big dumpsters outside houses in my neighborhood that are fix and flip or whatever it is, but yeah. Okay, well, I guess that does answer my question about that and I guess I'll rescind my suggestion, but I am in support of putting this money towards Odell Berry Park.
Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Faboda, thank you so much for bringing up like the change in demographics because I think there's an alignment here, right? I think there are a lot of people in our community who would love to be able to replace a fence, do a new furnace and like would love help, but because this grant or whatever the powers that be have not caught up with standard of living, like you have to make $90,000 now as a single person to like live comfortably in our area, right? So there's a misalignment here. And I think you can see that in our data and evidence with our code, right? A lot of people would love to get their yards done. A lot of people would love help with there, but they don't qualify, right? But they don't actually have the disposable income to actually fix all of these things. I'm having a really hard time saying yes to money for a park with the incoming economic forecast that we're seeing with, I know, I feel like we could give this money to food banks. There's a lot of, we saw 13% of our residents are on SNAP benefits with that being cut. There is a lot more going on that I feel like I see in this list of things that we could give to, which would better our community in these current moments than a park in the future, is how I'm presently feeling about this. Head Start is also, has had funding cut here in Adams County. There's the church right by my house, by the Walmart and Starbucks, right? That what's going to happen with those parents when they lose their childcare? I just, and maybe that'll be fixed in 30 days, maybe it'll be fixed soon. That's fine. But I just feel like there's a lot of need in the community and I think a park is a nice to have right now, not a need to have. But would love to hear everyone else's thoughts, because this is a big chunk of money, right? So, thank you.
Councilmember Nowiki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burns, that's a really interesting point. Can we use that money for that?
So in the attachment, there's a list of other programs and efforts that we can do. What we would likely have to do is go to HUD and identify what it is that we would allocate the money for, have them review it and then approve it. And then we would have to have a recipient, an eligible recipient in order to do that. Then take that to the county and have the county agree for us to do that. Historically, I can tell you, it has been difficult, even though you see what's identified here, to be able to carry out and execute with the HUD. When we had BikePed Mobility Plan adopted, we were like, let's go out and start implementing that program under HUD, because if you look in here, there's programs that are identified that. And it took us a year before HUD would say yes, that those were income-eligible efforts. In the past, we used to make money available to repair fences. In fact, we used to repair city fences and we were told by HUD after we did it that we weren't, that was not an eligible program or project. So it is, it is something that we can definitely explore and do. And I think it's more important as to what the council desire is in terms of how best to utilize these funds. But I'm just letting you know, there's, there's extra steps that would be involved and we would definitely be happy to pursue all those if that's what councils would like us to do.
And with that, is, you have to remind me, is there a risk of running out of time here?
Well, I can talk with the CDBG staff and understand where we are with that, but the idea here is that they would like us to try to encumber something in the next six to 12 months.
Okay.
And what their concern is, is that with the current administration is whether or not the administration will look at this and say, well, since you didn't spend it, you don't get it anymore. That's, that's the anxiety behind this whole conversation.
Right. Shoot, okay. So does the minor, the minor home repair program, I know we kind of, and I really liked your point about the changing kind of demographics and maybe, I think a piece of it too is, you know, comms and the marketing piece. How are we kind of marketing that program? Does it, can it be used to address code issues?
Historically, for code enforcement, we have been told no. That's a really good question. I don't know that I've ever been given a clear answer from HUD as to why we can't.
Oh.
But what, at one point, I think it was suggested that if we could use it to fund staff and we've been told that it cannot. But I do know that Federal Heights has, has used it for the, for the mobile home inspection certification process. But once again, that was years in the making for them to consider something like that. But it was under the umbrella of the code enforcement section of the eligible projects and programs in there. So it's, I think it's more of, of going through the steps and figuring out whether something is eligible or not, even though it says it is, it's not always the case.
Right. Okay. Because that would be really interesting, because I do think there is a need there. And with that, I mean, you know, if that were the case, like when residents go to court for code issues, are they informed, hey, there's this, you know, if you need assistance, there's?
So I can tell you, in terms of code enforcement, we literally exhaust every opportunity we have with residents and through our CRE program, we have the $10,000 that we've utilized for folks that are income-qualified. As a general rule, the minor home repair program is for the building and it's in order to keep people weatherized and winterized. It's not for landscaping or anything else. That the minor home repair program does not address those issues. And I, and you know, trying to reflect back on the reasoning for code enforcement is that if it's something that is not like a life safety issue, it's, it's a nuisance-related issue, the HUD typically doesn't. issue, the HUD typically doesn't find that. So that's part of the challenge.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I think, number one, I thought we were kind of in a, in a bit of a time crunch here. I understand the federalization piece, you know, that's why I was kind of leaning toward using that money following staff suggestion. But I do think Councilmember Burns raises a good point about, you know, maybe using this money to kind of address, is there a community need right now, you know, with people struggling that is going unaddressed that this money could be used for? So I would be curious to, you know, kind of point staff in that direction and giving, giving some of that feedback. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in real fast just because I had a question along the same line. So you attached in the memo, the matrix.
Mm-hmm.
And it says grantees need to refer to the regulations to determine an activity's eligibility. Where are those?
With the HUD. I don't have those. So this is what I'm, this is what I'm trying to say is like, you can read in here and say, hey, a capital project is eligible, but then you have to go talk to HUD and say, this is the actual capital project and this is the, this is the criteria that we're willing to consider. Are you willing to consider it under this particular category? And then they have to go through and review the CFRs to determine whether it's eligible or not.
So the, whatever the regulations are in this definition, those aren't something you can pull up? It's just a person that decides down at HUD? I'm just wondering.
Yeah, it's, let me, I'll, I'll let me share with my past experience.
Okay.
Is that I have provided projects to the HUD where HUD came to staff at CDBG through Adams County and said, we want you guys to stop spending money on sidewalks. And we said, great, we don't want to do that either. Let's sit down and talk about how we can go about doing this. And then we would come up and say, hey, what if we use the money for this? What if we use the money for that? And then they would say, oh, well, we're not so sure that that's an eligible thing. And we're saying, well, why not? And it would go back and forth. And so it's really about how, whatever the staff administration is at the time and how they're choosing to interpret some of the federal regulations. I feel that my past experience with them is, is extremely subjective. And it has, and a lot of times it does come down to the individual and how they choose to interpret it. But from a, pulling up a CFR to tell you, do I think this is eligible? Absolutely. But has that been the experience? No, it has not. It has been a very challenging situation in the years past when we tried to get creative and think outside of the traditional, let's repair sidewalks or let's do minor home repair. It has been an uphill battle to convince the HUD staff that yes, you can do that with the money.
Okay. Councilmember Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would it be, I know you just kind of spoke to this, but would it be a possibility to split the amount on two different projects?
You know, I think really there's, it's really up to the discretion of what council would like to, to pursue or consider. For us, it was more of how do we address a timeliness issue? And that really, that's the reason why we, we brought forward the information regarding Odell Berry. But, you know, in terms of staff having a particular recommendation or not, we don't. There are a lot of other opportunities and so we're happy to, to look at those.
Okay. I do love the idea of our park. I, I know that's something that many in our community really want and have waited for, and especially the honoring of Odell Berry. However, I do know many in our community are facing very hard times coming up and currently. And I do think it's important that we consider that. And part of us being here is that we're the voice of people who often don't have a voice. And I think a lot of times those folks who need the extra help aren't the people who are going to be voicing that. So just, I agree with Councilmember Burns, it's something to consider.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too am more of Councilmember Burns's camp. I, I think looking at the menu of options here, 05 Quebec, which is substance payments, which is on page 13 of 25, or 05 whiskey, which is on the next page, 14. And that one is labeled food banks. It seems to me, and I've had correspondence in the last week from a number of residents and food banks expressing quite a bit of concern about the ability to meet the demand signal. And my sense is that if this money could be used for these items here in the, in the menu, I think those two line items would be most appropriate. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Haraimea?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to also piggyback on Councilmember Condo and Councilmember Burns' comments on 05W, that's the food banks. I looked up food banks in North Glenn and we actually have one in each ward. I think that would be appropriate to help people meet them where they're at, you know? And we're all familiar with Immaculate Heart of Mary. I just saw a couple of familiar volunteers of the Mond Dragon family. They were there today, I saw them. So they're diligently working. But I, that's one thing I looked up and we have the, in Ward 1, we have the North Glenn Christian Church. In Ward 2, we have the World Mission Society Church. In Ward 3, we have Immaculate Heart of Mary. In Ward 4, we have the Crossroads Community Center. So just wanted to say like, that's an idea that we could have to meet people where they're at in each ward and instead of putting it all in one basket, but making sure that we get, that we communicate out to the community where these food banks are at so they can access it. Because honestly, in my ward, in Ward 2, the one I mentioned, World Mission Society Church, I have not had any real connection with them and I've lived there for, since 1990 and I have no idea like about them. So if I were to recommend somebody to them, I would make sure that we are, you know, making sure that we, people can learn about them, get to their, know where they're at and because I just, you know, want to make sure it's, it's truly getting allocated towards residents in North Glenn and it's well-used and not just being on shelves and being forgotten. And I think that's, you know, with, what's going on right now in the world, we need to, you know, just take care of, take care of people right now and I think that's the best way. But I also see in, you know, you said code enforcement, sometimes it gets a bad rap. But you know it, we know it as also as, you know, having a roof over your, like a stable roof over your head. Okay, it's heating and making sure you have heat and the wind's going to get pretty cold here pretty soon. It's already happening. That's water, that's pipes, you know? So that's another necessity for a lot of people. And if you've had to pay for your pipes, you know, that's very expensive. So that's another one that I, I thought of, you know, just dug a little bit deeper into. And I feel that, that's another program that if we do have that money allocated towards it, that we're getting it out to people that they can utilize these very expensive, I guess, improvements on their homes. But yeah, I want to make sure that we, I just dug a little bit deeper into those two. So thank you.
Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I know Director Peterson's worked pretty hard to get all these grants together to get, I'm actually pretty impressed that we're that close to meeting the final goal. So my question is, if we decide to allocate maybe some of this towards the park and not all of it, where do we expect to maybe get, I guess, close that gap in the funding that would be needed? Like if it's not, you know, if it's not the direction that we go in, is there any idea of how else to close the $760,000?
I don't have a single large funding source remaining to ask. We had DOLA on our list. We can still wait for the next grant cycle. I believe they had, they did not have an allocation for the fall cycle. I have not looked yet to see what's open for potentially spring or moving forward into 2026. Obviously, any dollars we have to, to be able to move that project forward would be, would allow us to issue, we are ready to go. We're ready to issue bid documents and move forward with construction pending the removal of the dirt that's being stored there has kind of a domino effect on some things that are happening here on this site. But we would certainly continue to look for alternate sources if we need to.
Okay. I was going to say, that is something I've heard too, is residents are constantly, when is that dirt going to be removed? That's an eye source. So we have all of this balance of coming in from both sides, right? Residents who want to see the park finished because they're tired of looking at the dirt mounds, for example.
Mayor Proten, just also, we'll have to verify whether or not we're going to be non-prioritized for the DOLA grant. We have to determine which grant it is because as of right now, the majority of the DOLA grants, we would not be prioritized.
Right.
For funding.
Yes, there is that as well with all the uncertainty. But to Councilmember Burns' point and to Councilmember Roper, I think it's worth exploring maybe if a portion could go towards the food banks because we've also, I think maybe all of us have been hearing that that is a concern. And there's actually two in Ward 4 because there's Good Shepherd as well. So maybe there's a possibility of, if it doesn't delay or cause us to lose this money, that is, because I feel like that's important too, to maybe split it somehow so that it helps food banks and also goes towards the park, getting us closer to our goal and closing that gap, since we don't know if there's any certain funding for, funding sources in the future coming up. Right now, the wells are a little dry. It's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to weigh in really quickly before we do another round. So in the staff memo, you mentioned that staff came to consensus around this idea. Were there any other ideas that were brought forward by staff?
Yeah, we looked at the, the Streets Program and our, and our Sidewalk Repair Program. Historically, what we did is that we took a break from Minor Home Repair because Adams County was having issues with their program administration. And we effectively, with the census tracts at the time, we went through and exhausted every area with the CDBG funds. Because of the timeliness that they, that they put upon us, we did not have time to go through and reevaluate the new census tracts to see if there's actually enough work in the, the new census tracts of sidewalk repair that would rise to the level of this amount of money. And so we haven't had really an opportunity, but that was one of the things we were looking at. The other one is part of our street paving program. The challenge there is that adding the 760 to, to the one, is it 1.22 million roughly project, federalizes it. So you would effectively be almost using the majority of these dollars to pay for the federal documentation process. And the other thing that we have found historically with using for these types of projects, the CDBG funds, is that we typically get the larger contractors who charge a higher premium for the work because it is federalized and it's a smaller budget. And so what we ended up doing is getting less value out of it. And so it's a value proposition of bang for buck. But those were the other two efforts that we thought about in the short term that we could potentially evaluate and, and bring forward, but they just didn't make sense.
Okay. And it, I think, when you put it all together in the nice package that you did, the park is the easy choice, right? The math.
Low hanging fruit.
Yeah, the math, maths. That's not a real.
Good. We didn't plan it that way.
And so that seems to be pretty simple, right? Low hanging fruit. It all goes together, it all works out great and we can get started right away. I think it's, it's hard to make that decision during this economic time that we're in and this very bizarre place that the country finds itself in with so many people that are going to be struggling. And so this list, and I'm not frustrated with staff, but I really wish HUD would be more clear because this list has so many things. And then to add that there's other regulations to determine the activity's eligibility, that's super frustrating because that adds an element of time and probably paperwork and it's a little spider's web.
And just to give you, absolutely, I could not wholeheartedly agree with you because then we get into Section 106 and 4H and environmental clearances. I mean, it's, it's pretty incredible how, how challenging it is to administer HUD dollars. And that's why you see what we have in terms of programs and projects right now is because we know these things are tried and true and they work and they've been, they've been successful in getting to the, to the compliance. And so it's a year-over-year thing where we don't have to go back and go through these exercises. But we're happy to go and have those conversations and, and explore those if, if that's what council would like us to do.
If we, if we have time, I mean, I'm at the 05W, the food banks again. That's, that's where I think we should prioritize. I'm going back on Councilmember Burns's comment of the park is nice to have and we're going to have it eventually. It's just going to take a little longer. If there was a way to do something else that would be more meaningful in the moment for our residents, I think that is the more responsible choice. That's my opinion. We have more hands up, we're going to go around again, but I, I would like us to at least pursue that option. And then if it comes back as it doesn't work, it doesn't fit the regulations, they don't love it, then we know we have an easy choice. We know we have a simple fix. But I, I think it's worth investigating something that's more meaningful.
So maybe it might save some time. We also have the 2025-26 allocation coming up, which is another roughly $225,000. One of the things that we could also try to do if I, when working with Adams County staff and the HUD staff, is that we effectively have a combined amount of money here. And so the question could be is, is maybe if we're unable to do it quickly, we could then look at next year's allocation towards these, or next year's fiscal budgeted monies towards going to food banks as opposed to something else, depending on how the timing works out. Or we can try to reallocate some of that other money in the future allocation towards, towards the Odell Berry project as well. So I think there's a combination of trying to leverage that future fiscal year coming in to add to the conversation so that maybe we can do both is another option that's just turning through my head right now.
I like that creative problem solving. How does our, oh, I got a thumbs up.
So sure, I just wanted to mention, one of the things that has come up, this was actually a discussion staff had in June and July as we problem solve. So this idea has taken months to come forward, so I didn't want to miss out on sharing that, that fact that it's not that staff threw this together in like a, a week and have been not, you know, understanding of what's going on in the world more recently. This has been, you know, four, five, six months kind of in the making to come forward. So, but as far as coupling the ideas of being able to do both, I think that's a great idea that just came forward and I think that that actually makes a lot of sense.
I, I love it. We think outside the box. Thank you. Councilmember Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of things here, since we've had some really good conversation. I just want to verify that there's no, that we're not going to lose the money we currently have for the Odell Berry Park as time drags on. Is there any kind of time limit on any of those?
We do have a time limit on the most recent federal funding that we received through the Land Water Conservation Fund. We have three years to fully expend those dollars once we start. So that's why ideally we are moving forward with construction at some point in 2026 so that we have adequate time to complete construction and close that project out well before that deadline.
Okay, yeah, I thought there was some kind of, but I wanted to verify that.
Adams County does also have a two-year deadline on their funding. However, Adams County has always been quite generous with extensions as long as we're showing forward progress.
Great, thank you. And then I guess I would also like to just verify with Director Svolod that, I mean, the Odell Berry Park is not 100% certainty of them, of HUD or whoever approving this either, is it? Or is it?
So we've talked with the Adams County staff before we brought this to you and they said, yes, this is an eligible project. They've done the initial, I believe it's the tier one evaluation is what they call it, to where we would be eligible. It's eligible from a census tract standpoint. That was one of the other factors is that we were coordinating with them to say, hey, here's a project, we've done, we did Larson Park under the same auspices. And so they said, yes, this would fall under that same bandwidth that we did before. And so that was another part of the logic here to be able to present something that was relatively turnkey.
Okay, so the, there's a, the decision is the certainty of, well, I guess we've got three choices now, of the Odell Berry Park funding, an uncertainty about food bank funding, and then a possibility of somehow doing both, doing magic numbers of doing both.
And I, I didn't, I wanted to, I didn't want to belabor the point of, we're likely going to be here again in the future because. we're likely gonna be here again in the future because the minor home repair program is not getting the utilization because of the income qualification standards. So the question is, do we wanna have a different conversation at a later date about what should we really be using the money for? Because unfortunately, we're just not getting that utilization, and, you know, from the data that we've observed is that it was the aging-in-place population that was utilizing this program the most, and we're just seeing fewer and fewer of those people, um, in the community at this point. And so the folks coming in, dual-income households, they just don't qualify, um, like they otherwise would. And I think, you know, one of our challenges is, is that we're rely, we're now currently working on 2017 AC, 2017 to 2020 ACS data, because that's what everyone's using, because no one's using the 2020 because it's incomplete. So yet again, to your point, it's, they're not keeping up with the metrics for, for multiple reasons.
So, um, then the other kind of comment or whatever, because of course, if, if we had a choice, if it was a certainty of, you know, putting money in the food bank, I mean, I'd go for that too. But, um, what about the Northland Community Foundation? And the reason I'm saying that is that they also give assistance for the utilities and other kinds of things besides just the food bank. So I, I don't know if that would make them, like, more eligible or more appealing to, you know, the HUD people or whoever has to approve this, and I don't know if it would be more appealing to us as a council, because there's more, um, you know, opportunities for helping people in different ways. But that would be a suggestion that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walker?
I'm with Councilmember Burns. I think there's, uh, the park's 100% a, want and not a need, and I think there's some good ideas on here, like the food bank, uh, that would bring some real good here in Northland, so I'd like to explore those options. Thank you.
Councilmember Nowiki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, okay. On a scale of one to five, with one being low and five being high, um, good to go, how, how kind of feasible, where would you kind of rate it for the park, using this money for the park?
It's, it's, it's already been pre-approved, so it's from, from the county, so-
So five.
There's no, there's no issues with HUD getting involved and saying no to this, uh, with the, with the park project.
Okay.
Um, the question's going, and the thing that's been turning through my mind with the food bank is, who's administering the money? Who's, who's gonna track the money? How's it gonna, how's it gonna be managed? And what entities are gonna be deemed eligible? Does it have to be a city-run food bank program, or can we just, just distribute this to nonprofits? And is there a restriction on whether it's churches or non-churches and all those things? Those are the things that I'm trying to figure out in terms of, because I'm guessing that's your next question, is how feasible is food bank? Um, I don't know.
That was not my next question.
Okay.
Would using it for a food bank federalize that money then?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I, I would, being that most food banks are volunteer, I don't know that that's gonna be an issue in terms of Davis Bacon.
Okay, 'cause, and I have to say this because of the weird timeline that we exist in right now. My concern is if we go back to, so on one hand, we have this money kind of ready to go, it's been approved by HUD, boom, we could use it. If we go back and say, hey, we wanna use it for this kind of benevolent thing, and now, you know, we've got eyes on HUD, and they say, okay, what's Northland up to? Oh, they support DEI programs? Well, maybe we're gonna kind of slow-walk them on this one.
That's very, that, that is, that's political calculus, yes.
Right, but unfortunately, that's the universe in which we find ourselves now, so we have to kind of consider things like that, so.
I think to that point, what would likely happen based on direction tonight is that we will, we will go coordinate with CDBG staff at Adams County and then figure out if we, whether we are a dead-on arrival or whether we have an opportunity to go and engage the HUD on what we can do underneath the matrix, and come back and report that to you, and kind of give you an initial, you know, understanding of where this falls and lies. But I think the, the process to potentially change it could take time just in general, because once again, we still have to go to the county commissioners, they have to sign off on this, and then we would then likely have to do an IgA amendment for the, for the reallocation of the funds. So there's steps in this process in general that we were talking about with just this particular, uh, um, suggestion, but adding the, the, the food bank could have some extra steps to it that will, that we can identify and bring back to.
Okay. To, to add in, to make it more confusing and, you know, um, uh, the food bank, I, I really like that idea. Um, I do also think there's some opportunities around, I'm looking and I see like neighborhood cleanups, and also like maybe rental assistance in some ways. So to make things more complicated for you-
Sure.
-I'm gonna just throw those ideas out there, and y'all can run off it.
Absolutely. And I, and I will just tell you that when we've had these conversations with them in the past, it's, it, it, once again, it's income-qualified folks, so there's an entire process where they have to get, they have to provide information, submit an application, get certified, qualified, and then, and then do the administration on it.
Right.
So one of the things that we also had with, um, the county is, historically, there's an, there's a, there is a federal compliance administration cost that they have to do for everything that we do, and so they will probably need to evaluate whether or not what their capacity is, and also whether they can actually, uh, administer this compliance, and then they will likely add that to the cost of what our eligible funds are. So that's another variable, because this is one of the issues we were running in historically, was this very issue, so. But we, we can get the information and find out what the possibility is for, for these things.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you all for hearing me out and like having this discussion. I think it's really valuable not to like continue to add to this. So, you know, food banks, like, it would be my top choice. However, the, when you dig through this list, and I wonder if, uh, what is, I don't know what Jessica's actual title is of crew, like-
Program.
Program, okay, yeah. Um, if she was involved with any of the discussions that were had around this, because to me, a lot of these line items directly impact their work and could be a huge benefit, and we all know crew funding is also ticking away. Um, so things like that, like, I wonder, and, and you've said you've been having this discussion for months, so has this, has this been coming up at all?
Uh, no, this conversation didn't go into that. And the crew funding did go away in 2024. Okay, you, you mentioned that it was going away. It has gone away, yeah.
And Councilmember Burns, I can tell you the reason why I didn't bring it forward is, is because every time we've ever had a conversation about funding code enforcement or other divisions of staff with CDBG funds, we've been told flatly no from HUD. So it was something that we can definitely revisit and find out more about, but I can just tell you that when we're looking at a timeliness issue and whether we're gonna go climb a hill to try to figure out how we can potentially, uh, find funding through federal dollars for, for staff, um, the other challenge that I can tell you makes me very leery with Davis Bacon is that it's a national salary. So in some regions of the country, an electrician makes $60 an hour, in others they make 30, HUD says it's 40, and that's what you pay them. So there's the other factor of diving into that part of the Davis Bacon component where they may say to us that, yeah, we'll, we'll pay for your crew staff, but you're gonna have to pay the difference, or, or in some cases, they'll say, you, you can only pay them this amount of money, depending on the type of position that it is.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
So that's the other hazard with why we didn't go deeper into that conversation.
Yeah, I guess like where my head immediately goes is like some money is better than the none we're having for crew.
It's in our annual budget now?
Yeah, but I just think like any kind of funding is better than the none. Um, I think I, I, and I'm trying to stay level-headed in this, um, but I'm having just like, I, I just feel like there's so many things on this list, and I understand that like in the past, and like how things have always been done, that is such a trigger phrase for me personally, um, because just because that's how something has always been done doesn't mean how it's going to be done in the future. Um, and I, and I totally get that, and I, and I understand staff's time is valuable, um, but just kind of hearing of like, we've run into these barriers before, you know, this is how it's always been, is just, makes me see red a lot. Um, and, and I get it, and I get it.
I mean, Councilmember Burns, um, I, dealing with the HUD is probably second only to dealing with the BLM on a federal level. They are very, very difficult to work with. Um, and like I said, we spent a year and a half with them to, to consider bike ped mobility at their request. They came to us and said, we need you to bring us something forward, and it took a year and a half for us to get them to say yes to something that they wanted from us.
Yeah.
So when I think about that past issue, and then say, okay, let's go see if we can get them to fund the staff position that they've said no to in the past, it's like, this was timely, we need to get something that we can present to council that makes sense. Um, that's the underlying current there. So I, I hope you understand, it's like, it's not because they said, no, we're not gonna consider it, it was more like, we're in a, we're in a constrained window, and we need to find something that's clean and efficient and turnkey. I mean, I'm happy to go revisit how we allocate our funding with CDBG, but I can tell you that it is, it is incredibly challenging.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know, I, I work for the government in my day job. Um, so I, I think it's, I think to me, like, where I'm at is sort of like a crossroads, is we have this immediate sort of time-constrained thing, where I think where we can do both, like do, fund partially the park and maybe some other projects and explore that, but I do think since our community's needs are no longer matching what the, you know, the fix-up-your-house funding is for, we're, so I think maybe we also need to reevaluate that program and like, as, as a whole, um, so we can better allocate those dollars, we don't run into this problem five years from now again, I think is my also thoughts around this.
Completely understand.
Can we go back to this creative solution? I'm really curious about it. So, um, when you had mentioned the annual allocation, is that what's in paragraph two, where you're like, we get approximately 2 to 250 per year?
And so what, what is, what was being requested by Adams County staff is not 25-26 fiscal year allocation, so there's, in addition to this 700, there's another allocation coming forward, that what they were suggesting was is, we don't need, we, we don't need to spend that, we just need to spend this excess amount of money. So that if you can find that, then what I was thinking was is, well, I can talk to them to see if we might be able to, to look at the, the, the 25-26 allocation with this balance and figure if there's a way to fiscally try to manage both expectations and see if there's capacity to do both.
I mean, if there is a way to do both, $200,000 for food banks in our small city is huge and would go a very long way for a very long time, and I think that would be incredible. Um, if, if there's a way to do both, I think we do both. Um, if, if it's not eligible, then we'll find that out. There are a ton, um, can you remind me? I may have missed it. Um, Councilmember Goff recommended using our community foundation. Is that allowed or not allowed?
I have no idea. I, I will ask the question. I think with, what, effectively what, because there's, there's ink, there's energy, there's like utility bill assistance programs and things like that, you know? I know that the county has the LEAP program that they do, uh, so that's for income-qualified, uh, seniors to, to have their utility bills at a, at a markedly subsidized price. Um, but we can kind of see what we can do or not do under our guardrails of our CDBG funds. So I'll be happy to come back and report and give you guys an update on what our options are.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Any other final? No? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks for doing all that work for us. Any other items for council?
I do have one. Um, we have our new IT director in the audience, Virginia Roberts.
Oh.
I'd like to invite her to come up. I did not tell her, I was gonna put her on the spot, but since she's here, um, she is learning the ins and outs of the council technology system, but, um, Virginia, would you introduce yourself to council?
Good evening. My name is Virginia Roberts, and I am very pleased to be your new Director of Technology. Um, I come with a background in, uh, a critical infrastructure, both in the, um, electric and natural gas industry and, and water. Uh, I was at Denver Water for about seven years, so I am ready to serve this community, and I'm happy to be here.
Nice. Does council have any questions or comments? I would just say welcome, but we have some hands. Now you're in the hot seat. Councilmember Condo?
First of all, welcome to the city. Uh, like Dr. Goff, I was, uh, there at your interview, and what impressed me most was your graphic, very simple, very clear. Um, and, uh, to me, I think that's really important, really, is just having an unambiguous clear vision for the IT department, and so I'm, I personally am very delighted that you are on board with us now. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is so nice to meet you. Thank you, welcome. Um, I am stoked to have a new IT director. Um, I think we're getting more and more tech-forward as a council and moving forward. Um, so ha, so excited to like learn more about your background and everything. I'm sorry, I missed your open house, um, but my ears had exploded, so I couldn't be there. But yeah, so excited, so thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nowiki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, welcome. Um, yeah, I'm excited that you're here. Um, how long have you been in this role so far?
Eight hours.
Oh, eight hours, okay, then I would-
Well done.
Then, uh, yeah, as far as the needs assessment piece, I'll wait to ask that question, and we'll go from there. But, welcome.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome. I was there for your interview. I think you did exceptionally well, so I'm really glad to have you on board. I really liked your vision and just the way you approached like teamwork and culture, so, plus all of the, uh, the smart things that you have to do. So really looking forward to having you, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thanks for sticking it out with us tonight, and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. All right, we are adjourned.